Vocation will be given by Pastor Carlton Sharp of Faith Christian Center Church. If you'll please come forward. Everyone, please silence your cell phones if you so choose and please remain standing for our nation's flag.
Let's pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, how we honor you today, God, just for being who you are in our lives. God, this is the day that you've made with rejoice and we're glad in it. We thank you for this opportunity and this council, God, as they lead us, this city. Father, we thank you that you give them the wisdom that they need, God, to make decisions, God, the critical decisions that will impact the lives of every citizen in Beaumont. Father, we thank you for the staff, God, as they carry out the assignment of this council. Father, we thank you right now that this city will be known as a city of cooperation, a city of love, a city of fellowship, one with another. Now, Father, we trust you in your word, Father, and we give you all the praise, God, for what you're doing now in Beaumont, Texas, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in our pledge to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor Sharp. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Muton.
Present.
Mayor Protim Durio.
Here.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Felschah.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel, absent, and Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. At the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to contemplating or pending litigation in accordance with Section 551.071 of the Government Code, the claim of Erica Patino and the claim of Superstop number seventeen. I'm sorry, Superstop number nineteen. And it's...
That's the claim there. You don't have to read it.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we have no presentations, no recognition. This is a time for public comment for consent agenda items number one through three. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room. Fill it out, give it to the clerk at the front of the room. She'll call your name at the beginning of your three minutes. The green light will come on and the red light will come on at the end of it.
Sam Marchard, I think that's Marchard. Six forty Kennedy, Beaumont, Texas, item E on the consent agenda.
Good afternoon, everybody. I am here on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce to advocate for the junior leadership Beaumont program segueing into the newly renewed Beaumont Youth Advisory Council. I just wanted to use my time to talk about some of the profound advantages that the program has impacted specifically on me. I joined the program last year in October, really mostly because it got me out of AP stats and I didn't like having to go to class. And every Thursday was a way to get out of that. But really, for me, it evolved into something that really highlighted the numerous benefits that the city of Beaumont can have for youth. I don't think it's really a secret to any of us that a lot of the promising youth in the city does not plan to remain here. This isn't really a place that, at least to the younger generation, has a variety of economic opportunity, you know? Like, no one dreams of a future in Beaumont, at least like at Westbrook or the schools or any of that. And this program really, really is something that I think has the possibility to change that. And with the support of the city, it could grow. One of the more impactful parts of it was that it really familiarizes youth with all sorts of different facets of the way the city functions. We toured hospitals, fire stations, art museum, went to Terrell Park. All did, like, we went to Baptist through Radiology Center, things that beforehand we had no idea even existed, positives that were going on in the city of Beaumont that weren't highlighted that now a large class of seniors in high school is aware of and may plan to incorporate into their future and remain in Beaumont. So programs like that and the Youth Advisory Council really have the power to impart a positive message on the youth of Beaumont that the city is not a place to be abandoned, but a place to stay and make better. So I very much hope that the city council will endorse this role of the Chamber of Commerce's Junior Leadership Beaumont and feeding into the Beaumont Youth Advisory Council. Thank you very much for my time.
Thank you so very much, little Sam.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Sam, could you please come up and take a picture with us? Thank you.
Come closer, we want you to get a better shot of us.
Hold on, if you don't mind, can Alex and Krista get in the picture? Mika, if you don't mind, can you take the picture for us? Please, Alex and Mouse.
Okay, everybody, just come on.
Maybe I look smaller for the point.
One, two, three. Play one more. One, two, three.
Thank you, dancing.
Uh-oh, I just missed that too.
Come back up. Nope.
We're laughing because we just took a picture.
We'll follow shop.
Okay.
Thank you so very much and so glad to hear your honesty and your words from our future leaders of the city. Thank you. At this time, I will call for a motion for the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
May I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number one, please?
Yes, Mayor. Counsel to consider approving the contract for investment management services. Today's market environment has interest rates rapidly on the rise and we need to capture the most investment income we possibly can. We can do better than CD rates by purchasing securities. On August thirty first, twenty twenty-two, the city had a hundred and forty-five point nine million in investment funds. And an investment management firm will dedicate time to monitoring the markets on behalf of the city and to develop and executing investment strategies to safely optimize the returns on the portfolio. As part of the agreement, Valley View Consulting is recommended. They're an SEC-registered investment advisory firm. And as part of the agreement, Valley View agrees to perform the following duties: assist the city in developing cash flow projections, suggest appropriate investment strategies to achieve the city's objectives, advise the city on market conditions, general information and economic data, analyze risk-return relationships between various investment alternatives, attend periodic meetings as requested by the city, assist in the selection, purchase and sale of investment securities. And the city will make all decisions regarding purchase and sale of investments as defined by the city's investment policy. Then advise on the investment of bonds as to provide the best possible rate of return to the city in a manner that which is consistent with the investment policy of the city and applicable federal funds and regulations, and assist the city in creating investment reports in compliance with state legislation and the city's investment policy. And this will be funded through the Finance Department's fiscal year twenty twenty-three operating budget. And the recommendation is the administration recommends approval of a two-year contract with Valley View Consulting.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. You've heard the reading of item number one. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Councilmember, Mayor Protim Durio. Councilmember Getz, next.
It says it has a hundred and forty-five point nine million as of August thirty first. What does that balance stand at now?
The balance usually goes down in September, mainly because we get all of our property tax revenues usually around January and February. We don't have the monthlies out right now, so I couldn't tell you the balance, but it is a little lower than that right now.
Okay. And what these funds, what do we use these funds for? We just invest them and, I mean...
Yeah, so the hundred and forty-five, forty-nine million dollars, that's how much cash is on, that was on hand in August. What we usually do is we typically ladder out sixty million dollars of investments for a period of maturities up to three years. So for every quarter, we have about five million dollars tied up in CDs and we ladder those out from three months to thirty-six months. And that keeps, that keeps a certain amount of liquidity coming through the investment, through the maturities of those investments. So anything over sixty million dollars just funds the operations of the city throughout the various thirty-eight so funds that the city maintains. So what Valley View is going to do is up until recently, we've been basically just managing cash. So we've been holding our cash in investment pools and money markets and CDs because the interest rate environment wasn't conducive enough to go out for securities. So with the way the Fed's been raising the rates, as we all know, in the last, well, within the last year, it makes it more conducive to go out and get securities and bonds of that type of nature. So those are a little more complicated investments. And so that's why we want to look to Valley View to basically aid us in looking at securities to invest in rather than, you know, just instruments of cash such as CDs.
So Valley View, they do businesses, business with other cities also? Is that their main customer?
Yeah, they have a lot of customers throughout the city. We've actually been using Valley View for about ten years now. Back when the interest rates were higher years ago, they actually did this service for us. They went out and found bonds for us to invest in. We suspended that when the interest rates were too low. We can find CDs and stuff like that ourselves. That's not complicated. And what they've been doing for us for like the last ten years, even though they're not searching for investments for us, they're compiling our monthly investment portfolios and our quarterly reports that are required by the Public Funds Investment Act. So they've been doing compliance work for us all this time. They used to do investment work and we're looking for them to do investment work again.
Thank you, Todd.
Councilmember Getz.
Todd, when you talk about securities as opposed to CDs, you're also talking about a somewhat higher element of risk. So I presume that's why you want professionals like this involved. But one of the things that I think about, and if you're of a certain age, you may remember, the city back in the mid-eighties lost a lot of money when it was investing in some riskier bonds. And I say lost, we eventually recovered that money, but it took a period of time and it was a very tumultuous process. A lot of employees got laid off and it was a tough time for the city. We couldn't do infrastructure repairs. So for the public, would you explain what type of securities you're talking about and contrast that with where we ended up getting hurt so bad in the eighties?
So the only securities that we look at, as you know, we're not like a normal entity where we can invest in equities such as stocks, high-risk, things like that. We're governed by the Public Funds Investment Act and that limits our risk to, or exposure to risk. So what we typically look at are government securities that are backed full faith of the government. So these are treasuries, these are government notes, they're Fannie Mae mortgage-backed loans, and then we look for bonds, municipal bonds, things of that such. And the only risk you have when you're buying these bonds, which is what we're probably going to be looking at, the only risk you have when you're holding a bond is if you sell it prior to maturity. We specifically ladder these investments out, like I said, anywhere between three to thirty-six months to where we're not having to call a bond early. So there is no risk at all if you hold it to maturity. You're going to get the stated amount of interest that's quoted in that bond if you hold it to maturity, and that's our plan.
No, Mayor.
Okay, now I know the discussion. All in favor, please. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number two, please?
Yes, Mayor. Counsel to consider a resolution approving the purchase of protective bunker gear for use in the fire department. Fifty-seven sets of replacement bunker gear has been purchased at a total cost of a hundred ninety-two thousand nine forty-five. The pricing was obtained from Casco Industries, Inc. through the buyboard contract. Buyboard is a corporate purchase in association that complies with the state of Texas procurement statutes. Old gear will be disposed of as city, as per city policy and the quota is attached. This will be funded in the general fund and the recommendation is approval of the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I see our fire chief in the audience. Chief White, could you please come forward and explain to the public what the bunker sets are used for? Thank you.
Good afternoon. This is in accordance with our regular replacement program for our regular bunker gear, which is for structural firefighting, has approximately a five-year life cycle. So we're having some gear go out of compliance and new gear coming into compliance. And it's part of our regular replacement program.
What do y'all do with the old gear? It's just non-functional?
It's non-functional. It's actually sent to city surplus to be destroyed because we can't gift it to anyone because it's out of compliance.
Okay. Thank you so very much. Any questions for the fire chief?
I have a question.
Councilmember Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, you were saying, so every five years we replace it? This just popped up on me here. But they offer a ten-year warranty on this stuff?
Well, it's part of our five-year replacement program. We try to, some is cycling out, some is cycling in.
Okay, thank you.
We have approximately two hundred and forty-three sworn firefighters and each individual gets a set of gear plus a set of replacement gear in case it's contaminated or damaged and things like that.
Thank you, Chief White. Appreciate that. Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify.
We need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number three, please?
Yes, Mayor. Counsel consider a resolution approving the purchase and installation of two PAX PWM six-hundred mixer assemblies for the use at the Loeb water treatment plant. The groundwater storage tanks at the Loeb water treatment plant currently do not have mixers. The purpose of adding the mixers to the tanks is to provide improved and consistent water quality within the tanks by preventing short-circuiting of flow through the tanks. Short-circuiting results in stagnant zones of water within the tanks, which can lead to loss of disinfectant residual in the drinking water. The mixers also help with better control of water treatment processes. The purchase will be made from Pax Water Technologies, Inc. of Chicago, who is the sole source provider of the patented equipment. Total cost of the two mixers with installation is a hundred twenty-one thousand three eighty-two eighty and the quotes are attached. This will be funded through the Capital Reserve Fund and approval of the resolution is recommended.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number three. May I have a motion, please? Have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Turner.
Bart, can you speak to, is this a result from the Corona consulting report we got back? You know, I know they gave us a list of some things we can do to improve our water quality. Is this a part of that?
It's actually a recommendation from a previous study that Freeze and Nichols did concerning water quality and specifically water quality from the water from Loeb. They pointed out the benefits of having mixers within storage tanks within the city. And then when we drained the west tank to rehabilitate it, we noticed that there was quite a bit of rust in the rafters due to the outgassing of the chlorine gas from the water. So by putting this in, it will mix the water within the tank. It will keep a consistent level of chlorine within the water, make sure you've got water going in and out on a timely basis, and it will prevent that outgassing, which extends the life, the service life of those storage tanks.
Well, Mayor, I just want to say to the city manager staff, I think it's important when we pay for these reports and they come back with the findings, to see you guys come bring these type of things in front of us. It speaks magnitude to show we're making these strides to improve our water quality and different services throughout the city. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? No other comments? Please signify by saying aye for approval.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. That concludes all of our agenda items for today. And I will move to public comment. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room. Hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. She will call your name at the beginning of your three minutes. Your green light will come on and the red light will come on to give you your indication that your three minutes are up.
I don't have any at this time, Mayor.
Oh, wow. There's no comment today. So I will move to council member comment and I will start with you today. Councilmember Neal.
No comment, Mayor.
Councilmember Samuel. Councilmember Felschah.
No comment, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember...
Well, you know I was going to have something to say. First and foremost, back on eleven fifteen twenty-one, we participated with the whole council with a vision workshop. And there's some things we touched on that majority of the council said they wanted to move forward on. One was building trust. We have a new marketing department in the city of Beaumont and we were looking to get the marketing department to come up and give us a report of, you know, how they plan on marketing the city, expectations to make sure it matches, you know, what the council's views. Another thing we discussed was economic development. We didn't say we were going to move forward on one of these things, but we said as a council, we want to get educated more on EDCs, type As and type Bs versus having an EDC in-house, you know, through staff. So we wanted to get an update on that. And another thing was major events. We do a lot of festivals throughout the city of Beaumont. We kind of wanted to look at the budgets for each of them and make sure they are beneficial for the city, which they are doing a great job. And lastly, I want to say to Councilmember Samuel, in twenty sixteen, if I'm not mistaken, he brought the youth council to Beaumont, Texas with the support of council. And this is something that's been very pivotal for young people in the city of Beaumont. And he brought it and he did it. Councilmember Samuel has worked with me as well as some people in the crowd to revitalize this youth council. And I just wanted to take the time out, thank you in front of everybody for bringing this program to Beaumont and helping get it back off the ground. So I want to let you know I appreciate you and show my gratitude. And lastly, the mayor, she went to a conference in Washington, DC, and she helped secure some big funding to come to the city of Beaumont. And I think it's important that we acknowledge, you know, our council, our counterparts when they're doing great things, because we travel a lot. Some people want to know why we travel. But for her to go out there and secure some of that funding, that the city will do a big press release coming soon, I think it's important that we, you know, give her flowers while she's here. So I want to thank you for going out there and representing Beaumont well and securing that funding to come our way. And thank you for the whole council for supporting the youth, you know, council. That means a lot to me. That's something I really been wanting to work with. And Sam, we gonna get to work, all right?
Thank you, Councilmember Turner. Councilmember Getz.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the weekend, we had something terrible happen in Beaumont. A man was run over purposefully and killed. This man was frequently here before council and, you know, he and I didn't always see eye to eye. In fact, a lot of times we didn't. But, you know, nobody deserves to have that kind of fate happen to them, no matter what the disagreement is. Nobody deserves to be lying in your bed and attacked by a hammer. Nobody deserves to be sitting in a movie theater and have somebody come up behind you and shoot you in the head. But we've had that happen in our history, too. As long as we've been a nation, we've had people that act out. There's always going to be those people. But the majority of our citizens are good citizens and we have to focus on the positive and endure the tragedies as they come our way. So even though Christopher Matthews was not somebody that I always agreed with, I will miss his presence here at council. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Mayor Protim Durio.
Yes, I just want to ask everyone to pray for the family of Chris Matthews. Definitely gone too early. Very smart guy. Had a lot of great ideas. He loved his community and he loved the city of Beaumont. And he will be sorely missed. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Just two announcements, Mayor. As we evolve as a city and involved in what I'm doing as city manager, I'd like to announce two things that we changed recently. As one, we enhanced created the landscaping green space crew. We've dedicated a department, a group to that now, under the leadership of Mr. Kenneth Regat. So he'll be responsible for not only the landscape work and manicuring work, but also the moan of freeways and right-ofways and that. So we're going to, we're putting more focus into the beautification of Beaumont. So we officially did that. And two, I'd like to ask Lauren Moniz to stand. I've officially made Lauren a department head with the freestanding department. It's got a media, public relations department. It's going to be the go-to for interaction with media, public with the city of Beaumont. Some of the other departments will still have theirs, but she will be the lead person. We need that, we need that to be able to have that. That message. And she's going to answer directly to the city management office. We're going to have her unfettered and be able to do her job and be able to do a good job for the city of Beaumont. Thanks.
Thank you and congratulations, Lauren. Thank you. City Attorney?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Barcovia? Mr. Boone? Thank you. Mrs. Semenow? And our clerk?
I just want to extend condolences to the family of Christopher Matthews.
Thank you. Well, I would also like to say condolences to Chris Matthews' family. He was a regular visitor here to city council. And Chris had a strong passion for the city. As a council member, Getz said, there's a lot of times you may not have agreed with everything he said, but he had a strong, strong opinion. He loved the city. And it's so sad that someone would take the law into their own hands. And it's so unfortunate. And again, I send my condolences to the Matthews and the Basset family. Also, there was a drive-by shooting off of La Vaca on Fonville. Again, innocent people. Even the neighbor talked about on the news how their house was subject to the ricochet of the bullets. And it's so unfortunate that those two kids were shot. That could have also resulted into something fatal. And thank God those kids are okay. We're living in a time where people are angry and just taking the law into their own hands. And so I just ask that everybody just please keep our city in prayer. In addition to that, United Way Drive has kicked off on yesterday. And that drive will run from October thirty-first through December second. So if you have not already donated, you can donate through your employer or you can write one big fat check. But the United Way representative has come here to express that their funds are low due to just the times that we're in. But United Way helps so many nonprofit and so many organizations here in the city. So if you can give, please support United Way. Also, this morning, we kicked off, the fire department filled the boot. So you will see firemen out on busy and main intersections with their boots for M.D., muscular dystrophy. And I learned something this morning that it all started in nineteen fifty-four from one family that had a baby that didn't know what to do. They went to the fire department and said, "We need some help." And the fire department had a coffee can that they, everyone paid for their coffee. And so they took this one can and donated it to this family. And from that day forward, they adopted MDA as their charity since 1954 to start giving their donations and their funding to MDA. And so when you see the guys out on the street corners with the boot, please drop your coins, your paper bills in because no amount is too small. In addition to that, last night, we had a lot of activity, Fall Fest and the Pruitt Center, our Parks and Recreation Department had, without a doubt, a great, great turnout. And I think they outdid themselves, but it was somewhere safe for the kids to go and to be off the street. And to the staff, they did an excellent, excellent job. Also Harvest for Lost Souls had a Fall Fest last night. Went by there. They had great food and fun for the community. And Antioch Baptist Church, they had a full fair out there. I mean, there were rides and food booths and slides and it was a great turnout. So thanks to our staff and to those two churches and I'm sure many other churches had things in their communities. And, but it was a great place for kids to not be on the street, to have somewhere safe to go. And so with all of that said, it is 2:03. That will conclude our meeting for today. We will recess into executive session. Thank you for coming and go out and spread the love. Thank you.